Good evening and welcome to the March 10, 2022 Xenia City Council Meeting. This time we have an invocation led by Pastor Gary Chapman of Zion Baptist in the Jeremiah Tree, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Thomas Scrivens. Would you please rise?
Good evening, to the city council, to our mayor, and to citizens of Xenia. I'm thankful and grateful to be able to come here and lead us in our invocation. If you will bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we again come to you the best that we can with humble hearts. We even ask now, oh God, that you would continue to give us the articulation of speech to be able to say those things that not only will be beneficial for our city and our leadership, but also for the citizens of this great city. We know, oh God, that there are not just rumors of war, but there are wars going throughout, not only across in foreign countries, but also right here, both foreign and domestic. But we know, oh God, that thou art able to do exceedingly and abundantly, more than what we can even ask for thing at this time. So, Lord, I just come today to ask that we might glorify and fortify and unify and sanctify and multiply the efforts of our city's revival, for our commitment, oh God, to honor and to love all those that come from every part of our community, east, south, north, and west. We even come especially now for our leadership, oh God, as well as our laity, that we might be able to again have revival and that your presence would fill us with a spirit of renewal and of commitment. Those that protect and serve, those who educate, those, oh God, that bring healing, those, oh God, who provide retail. We ask even now, even as gas prices go up, that we're reminded that the E is not empty, but the E is everlasting, that we can lean and depend upon you now for everything that is needed. We ask that you would be with the least, the lost, and the left out, and truly that we would be the city of hospitality. Will we welcome in the challenge of defending the rights of even those that are the least, the lost, and the left out? We thank you today, oh God, that we're able to come to you right now, asking that whatever business is at hand, that you already have made the decisions for us, that it might benefit and better us, that all of us might be able to live better and love better. In the precious name of your soon coming back son, Jesus, to Christ, we pray, and the people of God, saints and angels, can say amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Gary Chapman, thank you Councilman Scrivens. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilwoman Branham?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith? Aye. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from the February 24 regular meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written, please.
Send them.
Read by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Branham. Any discussion, corrections, or additions need made to the February 24 meeting notes? Not seeing any, can we get a roll call, please?
Vice President Urschel?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean, or Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes from the March 1, 2022 special meeting. These were just recently published, appreciate that, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes, please.
Send them.
Read by the mayor.
Do we have a second? I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Discussion, questions, concerns regarding the minutes. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is special presentations. We have none scheduled for this evening, so we'll move on to audience comments. This is the opportunity during our meeting for anyone that would care to come to the podium, please give us your name, address, for the record, your comments, two to three minutes, please.
Jeremy Urban, 921 Orville Weg, Xenia. President, mayor, and councilman, I'm here to talk in favor of what will be a resolution that will be presented to you at the end of this, at the very end, in favor of supporting that Resolution 20022, and I believe it's P, for the authorization of the Green County Committee, Community Investment Grant. I just wanted to give you a quick update on how important that grant is for our facility and for the facility to be then implemented into the use of the Community Steam Academy, Xenia, which will be, provide innovative education, a heart, mind, body, and soul. Where the school currently is, is we will be opening this fall, 2022. We have almost 100 enrollees that are scattered around the entire state of Ohio, so even though it's seeded here in Xenia, and it will serve Xenia residents, but also it will serve Green County residents, it also bring, is bringing in from other areas. In fact, within a 30-mile radius, bus transportation will be provided to the school, but we're open to anyone in the state of Ohio, and so we have them scattered all around. The importance of that is the fact that this will become one of the flagships, steam academies in the state, and it will be very instrumental in bringing in more individuals, staff members as well, hiring employees, as part of the revitalization of the downtown area, including five blocks east of utilizing the former East High School building as well, as part of the complex that would become the K5 facility or campus. And so there's great resources that we're looking to use that grant money for, to really make a difference in this community and really impact the downtown and going towards the east end. As a lot of other things are pushing westward, we're gonna try to take some of those spaces and bring them back and revitalize them back into the use of building the community and educating our young students for the 21st century. So, thank you for the time and consideration of that resolution.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? Give us your name, address, for the record. Okay. All right, see no one else, we'll move on to old business. Our first item is ordinance 2022-05, which is a second reading. This is amending section 260.04 titled Holidays of the City's Administrative Code, as contained in Part 2 of the Xenia City Code. This was introduced by Councilman Scrivens at the February 24 meeting.
Mr. President, I'd move for passage, for sure, because this particular piece of legislation includes a new holiday of Juneteenth.
All right, thank you very much, move for passage. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion, comments, or questions regarding this ordinance at this time? This time, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item under old business is Resolution 2022-J, also a second reading. This is amending Appendix 2 of the Employees Benefit Manual, the non-union wage ranges for year 2022. This was introduced by Mayor Mays at our February 24 meeting.
Thank you, sir, I'll move for passage.
Thank you, move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Discussion at this time.
Yes, Mr. President, as I brought up at the last meeting, we had the introduction, I have an issue with us providing via resolution from the council a maximum pay per pay grade, but I'm concerned about us having a set minimum, because I think we ought to, there is a minimum pay that's established right now, that we have both a state minimum and a federal minimum, and I think we ought to give leeway to the, to the staff to identify what the ranges are from the maximum down, that they would like to do that, and we have, who knows what's gonna happen with the economy this year, okay? And it may turn out six months from now, folks will be willing to work at a, at a much lower rate, but I'm just giving that, you know, who knows?
That's what I said.
Yeah, and, and, but we've constrained you to have to pay at the higher rate, and we know if, you know, things crash and the economy's going down, we've established a higher rate that, that you're set to, and I understand we could, we could come back and do that. But I, I, I think it, we would accomplish what needs to be accomplished by, by just striking the minimum and midpoint and putting the, the maximum in the compensation plan and allowing the staff to identify if they want to publicize a range for those that they think is viable, depending, you know, understanding, you know, the, you know, just reading the economy and reading, you know, the, the job description and those kind of things, I think that'd give, give our staff much more leeway from that perspective. So, I would like to make a, an amendment to this motion, that we strike the minimum and midpoint and approve only the maximum as, as provided here in this Exhibit A.
So, a question pertaining to that, rather than strike that minimum, what if we just left the minimum as it was? Is that an option? Would you be, would you consider that, since the minimum has been set?
Like not amended?
The minimum portion.
Just the minimum.
You can do either way, there's a, there's a, there's a motion that's been introduced for striking it entirely, there's no second on that yet, so if you're, it's a point of information to ask that question, we can answer that. I'm just getting to the mechanics of Robert's rules here, so. Sure. So, to your point, Mr. President, you, you, you could do that, the motion on the floor is to strike that minimum. That motion hasn't been seconded yet, so the, the amendment is not, is not under consideration yet.
I just didn't know if that would be.
To strike the minimum and the midpoint.
My, my motion was to strike the minimum and midpoint and just to go with the maximum. That, anyways, I'm just, I'm putting, I'm putting a motion for amendment.
Got it.
So, that motion's been made, your question as a point of information, I think we've answered, you technically could do what you suggested, you just, you know, leave those if you wanted, but, but there would need to be a second to the motion to amend the proposal in order for that to be resolved.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend, I'm sorry, we have an amendment?
Motion to amend.
Yes.
You have a motion to amend, you don't have a second.
All right, so, and that is to strike the minimum and the midpoint on the ranges and just leave the maximum, and that would be to assist in negotiations.
Correct.
Do we have a second to Vice President Urschel?
A second would allow us to have discussion, then we'd have a vote, then we have a vote on the amendment, and then if it is approved, then you would take, entertain a motion to approve the item. Right, so we're waiting for a second, so we have a discussion.
I'll second, because I would like to discuss it.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, open the floor for discussion, please.
So, I just want to qualify that this, if we strike the minimum in the midpoint, does it allow you then to set the minimum at whatever minimum you think appropriate?
Yes, as long as there's no contractual obligations or other laws that would require us otherwise. Most of these are going to be non-union positions, right? Right, because all of our, all of our wage scales for our, all of our unionized positions are established in contracts, so those minimums and step increases are already established in contracts. So, this is mostly your professional staff, you'd have some unionized, and there's maybe some.
Right, yeah, I think it would, it would allow staff then, in posting for a job, to set that posting range outside of the ordinance, and so I, I don't think that's necessarily.
On the minimum.
On the, on the minimum, obviously, up to the maximum that's been approved by the council. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, I would prefer that, rather than leave a minimum in place where that minimum really doesn't mean a whole lot, because it's not keeping pace with the market, from, from my perspective, anyway. I, I like the idea of just, if you're not going to amend it from year to year, just get rid of it altogether, and then allow staff to advertise the range that, from a, from the bottom standpoint, that they think is appropriate in order to attract the, the best candidates. That would be, from my perspective, I don't see any major concerns with that approach, but, and I certainly like it better than just leaving the minimum where it was before.
Thank you.
Right. That makes sense.
Ryan, help me if I'm correct, I mean, you, you negotiate an entry salary anyways. If, if we publish the minimum, you're not bound to employ at the minimum, right?
Correct, in, in fact, in this market, it's rare that we would employ at the, at the minimum. We typically take into consideration, you know, what the applicant's currently making and what it would take to attract that candidate, but, yeah, we're not bound to, to employ them at that minimum.
Okay, but the one thing you are bound by us doing this is that you cannot go over the maximum that we've approved.
Correct.
I think establishing the minimum and to, you know, to that, to that point, the maximum, it gives a potential candidate an understanding, you know, just from a marketing standpoint of what can be expected for that position in that community. I don't have huge heartburn about this, it's, I mean, again, we rarely, if ever that I can remember, have we started someone at the top of the range, it's just not really how we operate.
Any other discussion from council?
I would just add for myself, for someone that hires exclusively off this list, all my employees are non-union, if all that's left is the maximum, when I hire someone in, if the finance directors hired someone in at pay grade three, but he's set, do pay grades mean anything anymore, if you've gotten rid of the minimum and the midpoint? Because you could say you're pay grade three, but if the only thing that shows is 3116, I could hire you in at $25 an hour, which is maybe more than his grade four people are making. So, as someone that hires off this, having a minimum and a maximum, I know what the window is of where I should be hiring that person based on their pay grade. If, if all that's shown is the maximum number when you hire, am I hiring you at pay grade one? Is that pay grade three? Is it four?
And that's really relative to.
Because it could be anywhere.
Internal equity, as you compare positions and what the minimums of those positions are compared internally to other positions in the other ranges.
There is already some overlap in those ranges, eliminating the mid, or in the, the minimum just extends, you know, the amount of overlap between, say, range three and four. But, but that, the scenario that Ms. Fisher presented still could happen in the current contract, it's just not as likely.
My greatest unease is us raising the floor so that you're not allowed to use that in negotiations, depending upon what's going on in the economy, because we've sent, we have now raised the minimum for all of these positions, okay? And we don't hire except for you three from the council, right? And so, if, if you guys need to work out amongst yourselves some ranges of these things so you have some equity amongst your employees to do that, I think you guys can do that. But we're not, we're not, we're not directing you to do that so that you don't have to think about it, because the council did that for you, and that's not your problem anymore, it was given to you by council, right? Because I ought to give you something, I, I don't want to raise the minimum at all, period, I just don't, I don't think, I'm, I'm very concerned about us having this incremental creep of a minimum pay of all of our wage grade employees.
That never retracts.
That never retracts, this never retracts once that happens, that's my biggest concern.
I get it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move the previous question, a vote on the amendment.
All right, we have a comment to ask the question here, so at this time, we'll make, take a vote on the amendment to the motion, which is to strike the minimum and the midpoint on the compensation plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
No.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Nay.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, so now we're going back to the original motion made by the mayor and seconded by Councilman Scrivens to amend the Appendix 2 of the Employees Benefit Manual for year 2022. Any other discussion on that? Okay, and we'll ask the question. Roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. First on new business is ordinance 2022-06 titled Introduction. This is approving a major change to the plan unit, the plan unit development concept plan for Wright Cycle Estates. That increases the number of planned single-family homes and decreases the planned commercial acreage. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. Originally initiated nearly three decades ago, the Wright Cycle Estates PUD was envisioned as a walkable 306-acre mixed-use community with a range of housing types and to include a village center concept containing shops and a school. While this entire vision never came to be as a result of a number of factors, economic and otherwise, a sizable portion of mixed housing was built out, as well as a public park in a connection to the Little Miami Scenic Trail. Less than half of the original acreage has been developed, and the PUD has undergone several changes over the years. Recently, the balance of the undeveloped property was sold to a new development firm titled Wright Cycle Estates Holdings 3 LLC, and this new owner is now seeking to move forward with subsequent housing build-out, albeit under a modified plan, which is the subject of this, this agenda item. The desired changes to the PUD would require city council action via ordinance. Specifically, the developer is seeking to change the following items, redesigning, or rather, redesignating approximately 10 acres of the land along Wright Cycle Boulevard, mostly west of High Wheel Drive, from commercial to single-family residential. The remaining 6.5 acres of land adjacent to US 42 at Wright Cycle Boulevard would remain commercially zoned as it presently is. Changing also the planned small and patio lots on Tandem Drive to medium lots with reduced density, and increasing the density of medium lots on the future street east of Tandem Drive. While these, with these changes, the previously approved street outline or, or planned layout would be maintained. If the proposed changes would increase, excuse me, as a result of the fact that the proposed changes would increase the residential units, the total number from 271 to 293, the proposed increase does then require a reclassification of this as, as a major PUD change, and that is what has initiated the process, which requires ordinance to approve. Staffs worked with the developer to consider our code requirements, to look at the regional land use plans, and we've encouraged cooperation of change elements that fall within our guidelines. Staffs also completed an impact analysis to evaluate the relative impacts of the proposed change to the PUD. Highlights to this analysis have been included in your agenda report, so hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that. With all these factors in mind, our staff believes that the proposed changes as presented are acceptable. The requested changes were presented in a public hearing to Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting on March 3. The commission voted to endorse the changes. Pursuant to our code, city council would need to adopt ordinance 2022-06 as presented to authorize those changes, and so this evening, we're recommending introduction of that change in order that council might consider it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to point out that this, just recently, last Thursday, did come to planning and zoning, there was a few residents that did speak, really neither for or against, and I would also remind everyone that the next meeting, we will have a public hearing, and that will be March 24th. So, at this time, does anyone have any questions for the city manager regarding this development? If not, I will, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, plant on, so, help me if I'm understanding, so the section that is still planned to be commercial is, is up on, on the entranceway there, is that correct? That's correct, and I would, that's, what was it, 6.5 acres, I think I said, would remain commercial. Right, so that was commercial and it's remaining commercial. Yeah, there was originally intended to be somewhat of a town center type of environment with this, with, with some commercials, service-related commercial that, you know, perhaps some retail for this sort of insular community, just never materialized, you know, we had the 2001, you know, the recession, 2008 recession, so that the area never built out as conceived, other than the housing that's there today. So, under this change, a portion of that commercially zoned would, would revert to residential, but you would have a portion that would remain commercial, and that's the outer portion. Okay, and so that, that lot that's off of 42 then is the, is the one that will stay as commercial, the actual lot, is that correct, Ryan? Yeah, the outer part, I'm calling it outer, but that, that would be easterly most part. Right, but the, the, the part that's farther away from 42 is going to be turned into some residential lots along the street that exist there today. Correct, okay. So, I, I know one of the items in that specific lot has to do with, Xenia Grace Chapel owns a residential building, but the, the owner has the lot, and there was a lease for, that was like a 10 or 12-year lease that's expiring soon. Did that come up in, in the context of this discussion at all? I'm gonna defer to Mr. Porchny.
Yeah, the pastor was at the meeting, and he mentioned that, and I know that he's been in negotiations with the developer about that, that a house can remain, I mean, from a zoning standpoint, the house can be, remain or it can be moved as.
Okay, so, so the actual zoning of that lot really hasn't changed, I mean, in terms of the use, is that correct?
Yeah, this action has not changed the situation of that property.
With that property, okay, I didn't know if that had influenced that or not.
Okay.
Right, the, the situation was that the original owner had sold the building to the church, which Xenia Grace Chapel, which is right adjacent to them, and had signed a, a lease of the land for, I don't know, it was 12 or 15 years, and so, which, you know, when you sign those things, it seems like forever until it's not, which is this year. So, they're, they're facing a problem, they own a building which they don't have the land points, right? Right. So, and I know they've been in some negotiations, but I didn't know if that had, it sounds like this hasn't really changed that circumstance.
No, that's, that's really private party negotiation that has nothing to do with something.
Okay, I just wanted to see if that had entered in. And those only change as a result of this would affect that. Right, okay, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porchny. Any other questions for either the city manager or Mr. Porchny? I will ask any of my colleagues if they would care to introduce.
I'll introduce.
All right, introduced by the vice president. Our next item is Resolution 2022-K titled Emergency. This is authorizing an event and now payment of $6,129 to Worldwide Industries Corporation for closeout of the water tower painting project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, council president, as I'm sure council is aware, when there's a circumstance like this where money isn't encumbered, yet there's an expense to be paid, and that expense exceeds $3,000, then we are required by state law to bring it before the council to approve that, and in this circumstance, that's what we call a then and now, basically stating the money was available when the expenditure occurred, and it's still available now. Here, in this circumstance, it's related to the painting of the water tower. Water towers at Spring Hill Park and North Patton Street, there was an invoice that was still outstanding for $6,129. I, I think PO was inadvertently closed, that was opened initially for payment of this project, and so when they went to process this remaining invoice, that PO was no longer available for payment, and so we're requesting tonight that council approve the, the payment of $6,129 to Worldwide Industries via the then and now, and we're requesting that it be done via an emergency, because there's some, some urgency to, to get this invoice paid.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Duke? All right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Duke? All right, at this time, I will seek a motion as an emergency to close out this invoice and authorize payment of the funds.
Aye.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean to have a second.
Considering one of the towers is not too far from our residence, I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Scrivens.
Are you saying if it wasn't, if it was farther away, you wouldn't say?
I'm close to the water, man.
That's right, that's right, you farther away, right?
Yeah.
That's where the pressure comes from.
Great, we have a motion and a second as an emergency. Any other discussion? Seek a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Our next item is Resolution 2022-L titled "Introduction." This is a wording multiple contracts with the provision of water distribution and sewer collection supplies to the city's Public Service Department for year 2022. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. This item is an annual housekeeping request that we ask of council. It's to approve vendors for our water distribution and sewer collection supplies as indicated. As in past years, an RFP has been initiated by our staff for these materials and supplies for our Public Service Department. We have four vendors that were responsive. This includes Core and Main, EJ Prescott, Ferguson Water Works, and Nina Foundry, basically the same four that we see pretty much every year. Not all vendors submitted pricing for all necessary supplies, and due to the large quantity and availability of various items, staff is, again, this year recommending that all four proposals from each vendor be accepted and that we enter into contracts with them individually, but with the understanding that staff would purchase based on the lowest price for the quoted item and, you know, we would pursue that on as-needed basis. So this evening, staff is requesting introduction of the resolution that would authorize us for bidding for these materials and supplies for the year.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the city manager regarding these multiple contracts for plumbing supplies, water supplies? Nope? Who would like to introduce?
I'll move for introduction.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Branham. Next is Resolution 2022-M. This is an introduction. This is establishing street lighting district number one on the Sterling Green Crossing subdivision and declaring the necessity of improving city streets and public ways within the street lighting district number one by the lighting thereof, therefore, for the years 2023 through 2027. Mr. Mayorman, would you like to explain this?
Yes, sir, thank you. Council may recall prior actions you've taken to implement street lighting districts to establish assessments for incorporation of street lighting in newly developed subdivisions of Sterling Green Crossing. We've done that several times over the past few years. This is pursuant to our land development code for new developments that desire this service be incorporated at the point that they're constructed. A total of four such districts were approved by council over the past several years. These existing districts were all planned to expire in tax year 2022. It has been our intent to allow these smaller individual districts to expire and then to consolidate them into one tax, or assessment, rather, district for that entire area, and that would be for the remainder of the payback term for these, the cost of the installation of these lights. Resolution 2022-M as presented for introduction tonight would accomplish this. If approved, would establish a five-year term for that assessment. This would not create an additional assessment, it's just carrying over the same amount from before and consolidating the four into one, carrying all of them over as one district. So, staffs are recommending their introduction of the resolution so we can get this aligned for the next five-year period.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman at this time?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. So, Brent, how are these fees used, distributed? Are these paying our people? Are we contracting out the maintenance of the streetlights? I mean, how are these actually being expended, or are they being escrowed, or?
This is essentially for the installation of the streetlights, for the actual lights themselves. Under our policy, the city agrees to pay for the actual cost of that streetlighting, just like we do for all the streetlights that have existed in our community for a long time. But pursuant to that land development code, any new development where we're adding new infrastructure, we ask the developer, or by extension, the new property owners, to pay for that original introduction of the infrastructure, and then, you know, as a collective, we pay for the electric cost. The streetlights themselves, we have an agreement through Miami Valley Lighting. Most of our streetlights are maintained through them, and there's just an annual maintenance agreement that is provided for the maintenance of the lights. So if the heads need to be replaced, or there's some other functional issue, it's through that contract.
Is that maintenance outside of this assessment?
Yep. This is just for the erection of the lights.
When does this ever end?
Oh, it's fairly short-term because the lights themselves aren't that expensive, really.
They're five years, and then they got renewed. We renew it again in five years.
I understand we renew it. Do we always renew it?
We will always renew it. We will always have electric costs.
If this was for the initial cost of the city, when do we ever reimburse for the cost, or we stop the assessment?
Well, does it include the maintenance? Maybe that's what it is, I think it's Brian said.
This is the maintenance and the electric. The developer was required to put the poles in. This covers the cost of us maintaining and lighting them.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is the... I ordered what I should have.
Okay, now, I'm just trying to understand that, right.
Yeah, this is the maintenance piece, and staff has, you know, times past even floated the idea to council about having an assessment across the city because, to, you know, to this point, there are certain portions of the city that are paying for those costs of operating those streetlights and other portions that are not. So the newer neighborhoods are, some of the older ones aren't. So we've actually approached council in the past about their interest in doing that and made some proposals. At those points in time, they weren't in favor of moving forward with that type of an arrangement, but I think that electric cost is some of the ballpark for a quarter million dollars a year just for streetlight, electricity. So it's not a small one.
The only thing I'm a little bit concerned about is I haven't really seen much maintenance being done on these streetlights.
Maintenance in such, in terms of?
Well, they used to be black, and now they're half-silver as the paints deteriorated. The windows on them are fogged. I haven't seen any that the poles have been out, but I'm just kind of curious as to when we, when we're contracting maintenance, exactly what are our expectations?
So recognize that there are a couple different classifications of our streetlights. So any of the ornamental streetlights downtown, the city actually owns those, we maintain those. We've had some preliminary conversation about repainting and doing some reconditioning of those.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the ones here in District 1, 2, 3.
Yeah, so, so the other streetlights that we have erected throughout the city, the vast majority, we have over time transitioned so that we don't necessarily own them anymore. It's an arrangement through the maintenance agreement with Miami Valley Lighting. They're actually in a regional process of replacing all of the existing heads, and I, to be honest, I don't remember where Zenia's at in that. It's coming up here where they will be coming out and replacing the heads from the old sodium and, what is it, sodium and hydrogen, I think, heads to the new LED heads.
Right.
So I think our residents can expect some switch out of maintenance on a lot of those within probably the next couple of years.
Okay. I'm just, if people say, hey, you know, we're paying an assessment for maintenance, and they look at me and say, well, I'm not saying that they're being maintained, I just don't quite understand what the context, how do we justify maintenance on that when it's pretty obvious a lot of these aren't really being maintained?
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look at...
But I think that's from a visual perspective, and I'm just, you know, from a functional perspective.
Well, that's different, function, form versus function, yeah. I'd have to go back and look at, that agreement dates back a while with Miami Valley Lighting to see in terms of the form, you know, what the expectations are. Functionally speaking, again, they're in a process of, you know, rehabbing those system-wide in our community.
Well, I'm okay going with this, but I'd like personally just to understand what exact agreement do we have with them, and who's doing what kind of maintenance on the poles and the, because the paints after a while, you know, are almost obtuse on some of the lights, so, yeah. The bowl is bad, but, you know.
Right. Any other questions for city manager on this item? And who would care to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay, introduced by the vice president. Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-L. This is also an introduction. This is establishing street lighting district two, known as the Greenway subdivision section two, declaring the necessity of improving city streets and public ways within street lighting district two by the lighting thereof for years 2023 through 2027. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, this is basically similar to the last item, just a different district, different location. This is the Greenway district, and so this would be continuation of that assessment for a five-year term like we're doing with the other ones. Not consolidating any here because it's a different district, but it's essentially the same function of re-upping the assessment.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Mayorman regarding this one? And who would like to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. Introduced by Councilman Branham. Our next item is Resolution 2022-L. This is also an introduction. This is granting a 50-foot wide permanent pipeline easement situated in part of Virginia Military Survey 387 to Vectren Energy Delivery of Ohio, known as or doing business as CenterPoint Energy Ohio. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. Recently, the city was notified by CenterPoint Energy, formerly Vectren, that it is planning to relocate 5,864 linear feet of an existing 20-inch high-pressure gas main in six different sections. This is a line that runs from the city of Belburg to the city of Zenia. But most of the proposed relocations within Zenia's corporate limits are either within public rights of way or in existing easement. There's a small section of the relocation of its planned on property owned by the city that lies outside of existing right-of-way. The city-owned property of interest encompasses a small portion of bike way located immediately north of Kinsey Road. CenterPoint Energy is requesting that the city dedicate a 50-foot wide permanent pipeline easement totaling .12 acres so that the installation of this great line could proceed. As the city law director is currently working to finalize this agreement with CenterPoint Energy in terms of the specific terms and conditions of that easement, staffs are requesting that council authorize this dedication pending the approval of those conditions and the easement by the law director. So, if we don't have the contract with us tonight, they're asking that you give us a vote of confidence that we'll carry through on that.
All right, thank you very much. And I did reach out to Mr. Berger and asked him about Kinsey getting tore up on this one. He said, no, but what about Detroit Street? Are they going to have to dig that up?
I don't think so, but I'll be double-checking. I'll get back to you.
I'm just curious, okay.
My understanding from Mr. Berger, it's all going up to me.
All right, that'd be great. Okay, so, any questions for Mr. Mayorman on Resolution 2022?
My question, is it, it's not going to touch Kinsey?
No, it is not. Yeah, her question is also mine. I emailed it, it's not going to tear up Kinsey. Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. All right, any other questions?
Especially if we paved it, it would fall right into the line.
Right, so, will they give plenty of notice to, is that Dockin right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, any impacted, adjoining impacted that requires to notify.
Trophy Shop, Hasley Church, McAfee Heating, McDonald's.
Yeah, all right, okay. So who would like to introduce this?
Go ahead.
Council, Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-P, also an introduction authorizing a submittal of an application for Green County Community Investment Grant for the Community Steam Academy Building Project located at 135 East Church Street. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. Grant program announced, the Community Investment Grant was launched last year by the Green County Commission, and this is administered through the Green County Department of Development. The grant program is designed to provide financial assistance up to $200,000 per project annually to jurisdictions throughout Green County for the development of sites and infrastructure designed to attract and sustain business activity. Each jurisdiction is permitted to make one project funding request per annual grant cycle. The grant is a pretty new grant. As such, there are some rather more nebulous eligibility and funding criteria, and that has sort of continued to evolve. So it's, I just want to make the point that it's new grant, it's not real specific on some of that detail. For this year, which is the second round of funding of this program, the city solicited local project funding requests, and we received six application proposals. A review team including the city manager's office, planning and development staff evaluated and rated the applications received. From the staff felt that an application from the Community Steam Academy was the most ready and viable project based on the eligibility criteria established by the county department of development. Community Steam Academy is seeking additional funding support to renovate and transform the former YMCA site on Church Street into a grade K through 12 educational center focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. As our guest during audience comments stated earlier, that is also intended to include a K through 5 operation at an alternate facility in the future as well. The total rehab project is estimated at $12.9 million, with the majority of funding being secured through bank financing and new market tax credits, among other things. If awarded, the Community Investment Grant funding would help close the remaining funding gap for this project. Given the options available to pursue of the applicants that we have, staff felt that the best project for this round of funding would be the Steam Academy request, and so we are recommending this evening that council introduce Resolution 2022-P to authorize that application for that project on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you for that report. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman regarding this application for the grant for community funding?
Just one, Mr. President. Of the ones who were selected, now are they going to get a chance to resubmit next year, or?
They can resubmit. Again, we can only submit one proposal per year. Of the other proposals, I think two of them, it's fair to say, were, they weren't so much for a specific plan for a building rehab as more of a concept. So I think there's an opportunity for us to work with those downtown building owners to help establish a more robust financial plan for rehabilitation. One of the requests, it was from, for example, One Bistro, was for a very small request, small amount. We felt that there might be alternative means that we could help come up with that very small amount for funding, given that this is a larger amount and only once a year. We felt, you know, going after the full amount was advantageous. So, those other projects can reapply in the future. We've also learned through this process, after talking with representatives from the county, that the city itself could submit an application for a public improvement project. One of the things that we thought might be apropos for next year, given some of the activity downtown, is to see if we could get resources that could be contributed toward a comprehensive sidewalk curb public space restoration in our downtown corridor, given the work that's likely to be pursued at the town square to take some of the older infrastructure. Again, that has broad economic value, community value. So again, this is a program that's new, and we're still kind of figuring out as the county is. There's no guarantee that the program will be continued next year. It's an annual budget item for the county commission to consider, but I think this is a nice thing that the county commission's doing, and we appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you very much.
One other question, Mr. President. So as I understand, if someone had submitted a proposal for $10,000 and we approved that, that would be the only proposal we would do, and we would be basically the other 190,000?
Leaving the rest of the money on the table.
Leaving the rest, not that it couldn't be allocated to other municipalities, but it would be allocated to Zenia.
Yeah, because you only want one bite out of the apple a year.
Right, okay.
That makes sense. Any other questions for our colleagues? All right, at this time we'll seek an introduction.
I'll introduce.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, our next item is an administrative motion. This is approving Jeremy Cox to the Civil Service Commission. There's currently one vacancy on Civil Service Commission, known as CSC, which has been advertised via the city's public relations outlets. Mr. Jeremy Cox expressed his desire to fill the vacancy. His background check was satisfactorily completed, and the chair of the Civil Service Commission, Mr. David Jordan, has respectfully recommended this appointment to fill the term expiring December 31 of year 2024. Mr. Cox's letter of interest is on the back page, and at this time, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Jeremy Cox to fill the vacancy on civil service and ask for a second. I'll second that. Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any discussion or questions regarding this appointment? And I would point out, for those that are watching, Mr. Cox is here tonight. Thank you very much for attending, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve on civil service. We appreciate that.
You're very welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is an administrative motion approving the schedule.
I want to say, may I have a moment to speak?
I was going to ask.
May I have a moment to speak?
If you want to come to the podium.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, Mayor, greetings, City Council. My name is Jeremy Cox of 2596 Keeman Drive, Xenia, Ohio, in the villages of Southern Green. On more than one occasion, I have heard City Hall express its desire for more community involvement from its citizens. Well, as the newly-elected president of the Green County Tea Party, otherwise known as Totally Engage Americans, I share in this desire, such is the reason why I'm stepping forward to answer your call for more community engagements. It's long been my belief that personnel decisions are policy decisions by default. I am most grateful both for Chairman Jordan's recommendation and for council's appointment to serve my community by filling the lone vacancy on the five-person Xenia Civil Service Commission. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and may God bless Xenia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cox. Our next item on the agenda is an administrative motion. This is approving a schedule of bills in the amount of $577,000. Mr. Duke, it's all yours.
Thank you, Council President. You may notice the format of the schedule of bills is a bit different this evening. This schedule was actually prepared in our new financial management software. Each of the items that you see here on the schedule of bills was actually submitted for payment electronically, which is going to be a major enhancement for us moving forward, although there is a bit of a learning curve. And so I will point out that the formatting on this particular report isn't perfect, and we will certainly be revisiting that and trying to clean some of this up for you. Most of our focus on this particular schedule of bills was making sure that we got everything in and through the process in a timely fashion. So we appreciate your patience as we tweak the formatting so that it's a little more friendly to the eyes. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the bills this evening.
All right, thank you very much.
Ryan, I would prefer Arial font, I just want to let you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Duke?
Hello, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We receive these electronically also, and it's a bit disconcerting trying to see this stuff on a five-and-a-half-inch screen, just want to make that known. We do get the hard copies seven days before the meeting, that helps. But we could make some improvements at that point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to address?
Not necessarily. I mean, we have talked in the past about providing council with different communication devices to view some of the materials that are provided. Obviously, to this point, what's provided is typically a cell phone, which is what I would agree in viewing this document on a cell phone, it would be difficult. And so we certainly could look at some other options for other devices that could be made available to view the bills. Yeah, we can certainly visit that.
All right, thank you. All right, this time, I'll stick the motion to pay the bills. Moved by Councilwoman Dean, and seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Other discussion on the schedule of bills? All right, other than good luck with the new software.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're quite welcome. At this time, roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the appointed officials' report. So at this time, we'll start with Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. As I just mentioned, we are undergoing some significant changes from a software standpoint, not only in the finance department, but throughout the city. A lot of these changes are impacting departments across the board as their method for interacting with the finance department is changing in a lot of ways. And so we've been really, really pleased and almost thrilled with the reaction from our departments. That conversion's going well, not without some headaches and flaws, but the conversion is going pretty well. There are also many changes that our residents will be seeing. In fact, some of them they've already begun to see specifically to their methods for paying bills. That new system's up and running. We've actually had thousands of payments already, well, maybe thousands is exaggerating, over 1,000. I'm not sure if it's more than a couple thousand, but payments through that new portal. So we've had tremendous response and use of that system already in the first week, and we're getting fairly good feedback on the usability of that system. And so we're excited about that. So we'll be communicating with the public more on some of their options for viewing and paying their bill and their consumption, those types of things. But if people are interested in seeing some of those changes, they can visit our website, and there's some links to some of those different tools that weren't available before. So just encourage people to go out and review those new systems that are available for them. That's all I've got this evening.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Duke? All right, thanks for your report. Next is a law director, madam.
I have a couple things this evening. As council had requested, I got in touch with some of my counterparts in the county. The county is going to take the lead on establishing a council for our county, for the Region 14, for the One Ohio, we had talked about. I know Commissioner Gould has reached out to the mayor, so I will let her elaborate on that if she has anything. But they are happy to report the county is going to take the lead on getting that created for us. So we appreciate them doing that. Second, if you can believe I'm bringing this up already, but if we are going to do our next set of charter amendments on August 2nd, we need to be talking about getting that in front of you. The election is on August 2nd. That means our window to have legislation in place is April 4th through June 3rd. If council is amenable, I would like to bring something for your consideration at the next council meeting for introduction. What we had talked about for the next set of ballot items would be Article 4, City Council, Article 9, finances, Article 13, general provisions. And then also on that ballot would be 14, Articles 14 and 15. Those are both recommended for repeal because the provisions of those are getting folded into Article 13. So I did want to bring that before you tonight. If you're amenable, I would like to bring that back for introduction at your next meeting so we could get started on that. That would leave just one last set then in November.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Okay. And that was all I have this evening.
That's all you have tonight, thank you. Next is city manager, Mr. Mayorman.
Yeah, just a couple items this evening. First, we are working to finalize or working on putting together several report items coming out of council's retreat from last month. So as early as next week, please look for some of that information to start flowing your way. Second, one of our responsibilities in service to council is maintaining an eye to legislation pending at the state level that can potentially impact our community and our organization. As such, there are multiple legislative items currently before, at various stages, currently before state legislature and the governor. One common thread among these, regardless of how you feel about the core topics, is that they are impacting home rule and taking authority away from you to govern in the community and vesting that authority centrally in Columbus, which, in my humble opinion, is a dangerous precedent to continue. So among those, House Bill 519, as further monkeying with municipal income tax, would restrict local governments who oppose income tax ability to apply late fees and to communicate with taxpayers who have failed to file. So I will get into the details of that, but again, some concerns as there are further attacks on that tax methodology. House Bill 563 preempts home rule to regulate, or actually prohibits, a lot of regulations of short-term rental properties like Airbnbs, which again is a very localized concern. House Bill 422, and I had quite a bit of discussion with the law director about this the other day, in essence, among other things, would really restrict our ability to attach outstanding utility billing obligations to a property, to a property owner, such that if you are a renter and you're a deadbeat renter and fail to pay those, it would help negate the obligation of the property owner who is profiting from that rental to have to pay that obligation. And then the net result is really our other ratepayers are subsidizing that rental market, which in my opinion is something that we are trying to improve in our community. And so again, just keeping an eye on these various pieces of legislation at various stages of review in Columbus, and so we'll keep you updated on that.
I will say that 519 specifically, I've talked both with the executive director of the OML and with Senator Dolan, who chairs the finance committee, and talked specifically about this house bill and that we do not support it. Well, I don't. I never said "we" because I don't want to speak for you all. I said that it's something that does not seem like it would be a good plan, but I personally was very vocal that I did not support it.
I think the underlying concern, you have a pretty significant contingent in Columbus right now that is very fine income tax, you know, very adverse income tax. And that's understandable, that's a reasonable policy position to take. The problem is that as we continue to erode municipalities' ability to levy that tax, that's the bread and butter of the majority of communities across the state of Ohio. And again, as we've said to this body, to our community over and over again, over the years, that's for core services. That's fire, that's police, that's street maintenance, core services. So if we don't like that tax mechanism, okay, but let's have a more comprehensive conversation about how local governments are to fund core services. Those issues aren't relevant to the folks in Columbus, so they don't have to deal with that. We do, and those are the services for our citizens and our community. So again, constant, you know, really a barrage of attacks on the income tax issues. It's a home rule matter as much as anything else, and we've seen this, what used to be slow, now with increasing pace, attack on home rule in the state of Ohio. And I think that's concerning, you know, being in the municipal government business, so better shut up.
All right, what else do you have?
That's all I have.
Anything positive?
We have lots of projects going on across the city. As we've been talking about with council, we are really seeing a resurgence in activity across some of our spectrums, but there's a price for progress, so look out for all kinds of construction going on.
All right, thank you very much.
Is that good enough for something optimistic?
Yeah, all right. Reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Our first commission is Board of Zoning Appeals. Councilman Branham?
Nothing further to add, it was canceled due to a lack of a denier.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything for BZA for Councilman Branham? All right, thank you very much, sir. Next is Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities chaired by Mayor Mays.
Thank you, we did meet on March 2nd, we had quite a bit to discuss. The tree committee gave a report letting us know about the adopt-a-spot is starting May 15th. So if you are interested in adopting one of the large pots that are around town and maintaining that through, I believe it was November, and taking care of it, weeding it, making it look nice, please let the city know. You can contact the, probably Michelle's office. Thank you. The tree committee also, they reported they've got their Arbor Day on April 23rd at Devil Winds, and they also have the actual Arbor Day event planned for April 29th at Summit Academy. We discussed the Easter egg hunt, which is coming up on the 16th. Usually hold these up. Can you see that? I don't know, can you see that?
It's a little higher.
Like that? All right, well, we have this. Oh, look at that. I can't hold straight, that's very confusing. April 16th, registration begins at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be at Shawnee Park, and you can come on out, put your name in for a raffle prize. And there are a lot of baskets already being made and donated. Walmart and Nancy McPeak have already donated quite a bit of items. There'll be some grand prizes, so if you want to come out and do an Easter egg hunt and register for some prizes, please come out. At 10:30, we have something new this year. There's going to be an egg dropped by a helicopter. Home Church has done this for several years, but it's become so popular that they asked if they could combine with our event because so many people come out, they want to use the park, it's much bigger, and we can have a lot more people. So at 10:30, there'll be eggs dropped from a helicopter, not on top of our heads. We will be safely back, and then that will take place. And then at 11:00, we will have the normal five hunts. We have a hunt for kids with some special needs and unique needs off to the side that's a little more quieter, not so much with the noise. And then we have the pre-walkers, walkers, 5 to 8, 9 to 12. So lots of kids, come on out, all kinds of fun stuff happening that day. Love to have you. And, oh, and the Easter bunny will be there, except for pictures. And the last thing that we talked about was the fishing derby, which is still tentative right now, possibly in June. Stay tuned for details about that, that will be coming. And that is all I have for Braca.
All right, any questions for the mayor on Braca?
Let me say this, I would encourage my council members and colleagues, if you would like to donate a basket to be raffled off, I'd love for that to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you want us to be present that day to also help distribute?
Wonderful if our council was present to be available to the community, hang out. It's a ton of fun, there's always music playing. It's just a very family-friendly atmosphere, so yes, please come out.
And where would you like the baskets to be for the event?
You can either drop them here at the city building or at Emmanuel Baptist Church, either one.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mayor Mays, thank you for chairing Braca. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission, which met on March 3rd, 2022, to review three cases. The first was Case PZC 2022-05, which is a conditional use to allow an existing brewery to relocate its production operation to an existing single-story building in the B2 downtown district. This was filed by David Hatfield of Devilwind Brewery for a property located at 113 South Detroit Street. That was approved. Next case was PZC 2022-06, the major change to the right-cycle estate's PUD, which we discussed earlier tonight. That was also approved. And the last case was PZC 2022-04, which is a PUD final development plan to allow construction of a 1,776-square-foot, ready for this, Waffle House Restaurant at 1963 Harner Drive. This was filed by Walter Bernou of Waffle House, who came all the way from Atlanta, Georgia, that night to be with us. So that was approved as well. So our community would like to welcome Waffle House, and thank you to Mr. Forschner, our planning development, for all the work you're doing on these cases. Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions for planning and zoning? If not, moving on to Finance and Budget Committee. The ink's barely dry on this one because we just met at 4 o'clock today, and Planning and Budget Committee had a meeting today to discuss updates on the financial projections, discussion on our 2023 budget priorities, ARPA funding allocation, and other finance and budget-related updates. And that was attended by myself, Vice President Urschel, and Councilman Dean, followed by staff members, city manager, our assistant city manager, our finance director, our law director, and our assistant finance director. Does anyone have any questions for that? And shortly, you will see some things come to council's attention, which will be the financial projection assumptions, the proposed budget council priorities, normally as this, and that should come out shortly.
Recommendations for ARPA funding as well?
Right, and recommendations for ARPA funding. All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have no work session scheduled for tonight, but before we adjourn, we are asking council to go to executive session. This is to discuss purchase or sale of property per the Xenia City Codified Ordinance 204.04 and ORC 121.22. At this time, I'll accept a motion to go into executive session.
We skipped the council?
We did skip council comments because we're not going to come back afterwards and be televised. So let's back up for a second and go back to council. I always do that, I run a rush right in there. And so we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Dean.
Nothing to add to that.
Thank you. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. Want to congratulate Mr. Cox on his appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Just want to remind you that we all have a political affiliation, but we leave it at the front door. We all come in here as a nonpartisan, we serve the city as a nonpartisan. So just want to reiterate that to you.
And great things, you're a nonpartisan as well.
Okay, I want to wish you well in your term of office.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for volunteering. Also, Mr. President, we were talking about how people get hung out to dry with a water bill. Is it possible we could charge a deposit to turn water on?
I think that's a policy we're going to have to, if some of the proposed legislation advances to the governor's signature, we're going to have to take a very hard look at our approach. There are a number of things that, practices we have in place today that would be much more complicated. And again, I think the collective opinion is we, our rate-paying citizens should not have to subsidize nonpayers in our town.
Exactly, I agree 100%. All right, sir. Exactly. I agree 100%. All right, sir. Also, I was at the inauguration of the new Central State President, Dr. Jack Thomas. I saw her there amongst the dignitaries. Didn't get a chance to holler at her, though. She was doing her mayoral thing, and I was super happy. So just want to say thanks for being who you are when you're out there representing us. You do such excellent job. So. Also, Mr. President, we have a senior that goes to Xenia High School by the name of Jamelle Smith. And he also goes to my church. I've known him since he was a tot. Well, he's not a tot anymore. He was wrestling 215. And he's going to the state wrestling tournament Friday morning, tomorrow. And they're going to have a little Bomba Iris sendaway about 1:30 at the high school, going down Kenzie Road, 68 to go to Columbus. So want to wish Jamelle Smith, go get him. You already got this, cuz. And one final thing, Mr. President. Saturday, General Charles Young, who was promoted from Colonel posthumously, and that's such a great thing, we're having a birthday party for him at the National Afro-American Museum and Cultural Center beginning at noon. So want to come out and show our appreciation for the work that he's done to bring a national park to this area. National Park exists in Greene County, thanks to General Young and his participation in the military service. So with that, Mr. President, when you're back, thank you for the long interview.
Thank you very much. Next is Councilman Branham.
Scrivens already stole my thunder about Jamelle. So that was, that was all I pretty much had to add. Jamelle is actually from the State's class. So graduation to him. So I've watched him grow up over the years, which is so essential. Congratulations to him and best of luck.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Branham. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just a little disappointed I don't see my age bracket in this, right?
Twelve plus. There you go.
You put me in the walkers.
Walk.
That's all I've got. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor Mays?
Thank you. A couple things to report. On February 25th, I was able to participate as a judge in the science fair. And I won't lie, my own science teacher laughed at that and thought it was kind of funny because that may not have been my best subject. But it was very interesting. The freshman under Ms. Brittany Emels does, she does a wonderful job with the freshmen there. And it was very interesting. They did a great job. It's outstanding. The next day on the 26th, participated in the Chamber Awards Dinner and wanted to congratulate this year's award winners. Matt Bennett, Alan Stock, Kristy Cox, Josh Fisher and Fisher's shop, reptiles by Mac. And then there was also a special award for Sheriff Gene Fisher. His wife Gil was there. And they also announced that they will be starting an award each year in honor of Sheriff Fisher. So it was a really good night. Wonderful to see so many people attending the Xenia Chamber Awards Dinner. On the, on March 3rd, I attended the NVRPC. And a couple of things to report from that. Elected the officers for the year. And then we voted on two amendments for the Transportation Improvement Program. So, and then we had a long presentation about electric vehicles. So it's very interesting, very timely. They're very passionate about what they do. On March 4th, as Councilman Scrivens said, attended the investiture for Dr. Thomas, who was the ninth president for Central State. It was very exciting to hear him announce a scholarship program for Xenia Community School Kids, Dayton, Trotwood, and Springfield. It's exciting to hear Xenia and the ways they want to work with the students here. So later in the afternoon, there was a reception and I had an opportunity to give remarks on behalf of Xenia and congratulate Dr. Thomas in being the ninth president. And then on, gosh, what was Monday? On Monday, I met with a subcommittee that was appointed through the Governor's Office regarding the American Afro-American Museum and Cultural Center, specifically to talk about ways we can begin to promote it better, not just in the county, but also in the state and nationally, and bring more attention to that. So that is an interesting subcommittee to be on, and I'm honored to be a part of it. Couple other meetings and lunches, but I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Mays. Thanks for all the work you're doing. Very busy mayor. Next is Vice President Urschel.
Met earlier this week with county auditor, discussions about delinquent properties and how we can move forward with that. So I just appreciate David Graham. Took about an hour to kind of go over the process. And I'm a law director. I know you've done that, but it helped to hear it reinforced a second time from his perspective. And so I think the next step on that process is to meet with the county treasurer. So I've got a meeting set up for that. We also have a representative from the Xenia Community School Board that's going to be attending that as well, too. And just having discussions about the next step in pursuing the delinquent properties that are, you know, underwater here in town. So he, Dave was very helpful and said if there's anything that we need from him, you know, as we proceed on with that, he's willing to help us or assist us with that. So, so good on him. I really appreciate that. I've been going to the township trustee meetings. One of the items fairly interesting, the last one is our new sheriff is set up a program of IDing license plates through the county. And it's a statewide program. And are you familiar with this, Brent, about what they're doing? Okay. They have a number of locations in the county where at that section of 35 or 42 or the streets, they have an automated system that will take a photo of all license plates. And it creates a database of those plates that's accessible only on a investigative query of the database. And I guess there's a couple selected folks within the sheriff's office that have access to that. But this is a statewide database, so that if someone puts a query in to a license plate, they can see if someone has been traveling in another jurisdiction. So what was interesting is he was looking at a couple of locations within the township to be able to locate these. And so I think it might be good for us to have the sheriff come or one of his representatives to our, to our committee on--
Public safety.
On public safety and discuss this and understand that a little better, too, and see if that's something that we should have access to from a municipal law enforcement perspective, or if there's a need to have some of those located within the city as well, too. The, they gave us an example of one of the cases that they were able to take care of it. An individual who was, I don't know if you saw it on the news, was cutting catalytic converters out of vehicles. And they were able to trace where he was going to disperse those catalytic converters. And they actually were able to make arrests up the chain, other than just the individual, to identify the people who are purchasing the stolen property and do that as well, too. So, I don't know, Madam Law Director, have you heard about this?
Yeah. We had him in Franklin. We had him in Charlotte, Missouri.
Okay. Great. So anyways, I just thought this might be a good thing for us to discuss at a public safety committee meeting. Been going to the commissioners' meetings. Just as an information, we discussed this earlier today. They have made a decision that they're going to tear down Greenwood Manor, which was the nursing home here in, within our city jurisdiction for the municipality, as well as the girls', or the girls' treatment home that's there as well, too. One item that they did mention was that they were looking to disperse the, they've auctioned off the majority of the equipment that was inside there, but they're looking to disperse the kitchen equipment to nonprofits. So I'm meeting with four nonprofits, including the Merge Center, to see if we could put in a joint proposal for the, for the kitchen equipment there. So appreciate them being willing to donate that here. And they're just looking for nonprofits within the county to do that. Been going to the school board meetings. Two items there. They are doing a virtual presentation of various professions. And they're going to be doing that next week. And so they invited me to participate in that from a city council perspective, to talk about what it means to be on city council, other than anybody that looks at that as a full-time profession. But I'm appreciating the fact that they're introducing the students to a number of professions to give some vision for that. And they also have a after-school tutoring program for kids that are struggling, you know, with their grades and those kind of things. So I'd really like to be able to advocate that, but I signed up for that to go after school and help out with that. So I want to bring that forward because I think that's a desperate need for a number of kids in our communities to have folks come alongside and just spend time with them and do that. So anyways, looking forward to participating in that program. We're going to have a joint meeting between us and the city Fairborn on the municipal court funding issue here later this month. So looking forward to meeting with them and a number of other folks. Met with two, actually three individuals over this last month. They had concerns about maintenance of the stormwater creeks that go, I don't know if that's the right term. What am I looking for?
The creeks.
You know, where the--
The drainage system.
Yeah, yeah. And if I got this correct, Brent, the majority of those are on private property, and the maintenance of those is the responsibility of the individuals that own that property. Is that correct?
Yes and no. A lot of our infrastructure is in dedicated easements. I would say a lot of the newer infrastructure, a lot of the older infrastructure. I'll give you a case in point. I went onsite with our maintenance crew two days ago. In fact, it might have been yesterday. We have a collapsed storm sewer main right across from Shawnee Park, basically on a private, on a portion of private property right off of the parking lot.
Right. I went and looked at that one as well.
That is not on the map that we have in our GIS system currently. And, you know, these are ticking time bombs.
Right.
In fact, through a lot of that old, old north end, a lot of that storm drain through there is very precariously positioned, sometimes very, very close to existing structures. So it's, I think you could draw the question on, you know, it's going to impact private property. It's part of the public system, but it's not in easements presently.
Correct. Right. And the thing that was expressing me by multiple residents is, listen, we have a shared asset that's basically the part of the city's stormwater removal program and infrastructure that a single individual may not be maintaining that, and it will affect multiple residents upstream of that, in which they have no access rights, no easements, no ability to go on that, and which we as a city have no rights to go on the private property. We have no easement on there as well. Right?
It's a real concern. Yeah. And again, this example that I cite from this week, we've got a cooperative business owner because, you know, it could potentially adversely affect their physical structure of their business. So it's not an issue. But the first question I asked our maintenance supervisor was, is there an existing easement here? The answer is no.
Right.
Well, that changes our approach to things. And again, when you've got a cooperative business owner, that's much easier. But for those residents that think, well, it's not my property, not my issue, that's our flood control program.
Correct. Yes.
So it's not your issue or your problem today, but come 100-year flood, it could very well be your problem.
So we have a dispersed flood control management program that many folks don't, that's dispersed amongst the residents of the city.
That's drastically underfunded with infrastructure that has been largely neglected for 100 years.
Right, right. So I know there's no easy solution to that, but I think under our property management group, we need to start at least thinking about how, how come, what would we need to address this? Whether, you know, what the involvement from the city would be, how we would start getting access via easements, you know, on these properties. And I know none of this is going to be easy, but this problem is not going to get better with time.
And it will not go away.
Right. And it's not going to go away. Right. Okay. And then the last item is, we had a presentation probably about a month ago from United Way about their Strong Family Initiative, where, and they've launched that program. What they're doing is they're starting with 50 families here in Greene County, and probably about half of those families will be coming from Xenia. And what they've, principally, they're going through the school districts and asking them for their McKinney Vento program, which is their homelessness program, with students to identify either students that are experiencing homelessness right now, or that are at risk of experiencing homelessness, so that they can come alongside those families. And the main goal is to prevent a child having housing instability. And they are linked up with 14 other either agencies or nonprofits here within the county. It's the first time I've ever seen anyone actually able to get the collaboration of multiple organizations and come alongside and enroll these, they enroll the families in programs. It's a pretty big program to work with them over time. And their commitment is anywhere from 12 to 18 months to stay with them and principally make sure that the kids have housing stability. So one of the things that they ask at that beginning was if we would be willing to endorse them from the city perspective, that this is a, this is a good thing to have happening in our county. One of the reasons for that is they're looking for endorsement from the county commissioners. And the commissioners have asked them, commissioners asked them to go and present to the various municipalities. They've already got a lot of endorsement from Beaver Creek and from Fairborn. And I'd just like to make a motion to us as council that we issue a letter of endorsement under the signature of the council chair, that this is, this will be a, is a good thing for our community and would benefit us here at Xenia. You know, I'll be very careful how I say this, and this is no disparagement to the Xenia Community Schools, but it is a reflection on our community as a whole, that our graduation rates at high school are about 85%. What that means is 15% of the kids who are currently enrolled in Xenia High School will never graduate high school. And that's, that's not principally a responsibility of the school. It's a reflection of a lot of instability in the families and the situation of those kids' lives. And I just believe anything we can do to come alongside those kids, to provide some additional stability and help for the family or help for them, so that they can graduate high school, we desperately need to endorse. And so one of the things that the school's doing is the after-school tutoring program. I think that's going to be a great thing. And to have the social service agencies come as a collective, and have someone lead that and get involved with all of the kids so that they can finish high school, I think is a good thing, too. So anyways, I'd like, I'd like just to make a motion for us that we endorse this and that we have our council chair send that note out.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion to letter of recommendation, endorsement of the United Way Strong Family Initiative.
Strong Families Initiative.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Do we have any discussion regarding that?
That would be, that would be in the form of a resolution. So it'd be a resolution.
You don't need a formal resolution for this. This is more of a housekeeping. You're just authorizing the council president to send a letter on council's behalf. So it's not a formal legislative action.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion. A second. Any other discussion?
There was no monetary with this, correct?
No.
Because previously, when they came in front of us, they requested money.
Right, right, right. So we're just, right now, we're, yeah, just saying, yeah, we think this, do we believe this is something that we should endorse to the county commissioners?
Okay. All right. Roll call. Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. What else do you have for us?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Mayor Mays has some--
I apologize. I'm completely remiss. I forgot to mention Dosai Young is in the audience tonight. She has been job shadowing here in our city all week. She attends my church and reached out and asked about doing some job shadowing in the city. And so we were able to connect her with all the different departments. She's met with Brian Ferschner, and she's done dispatch right along with fire and police. So, and I'm glad to see her here tonight to also see what we do here. So thank you for reaching out and thank you for your participation this week. She's a junior at Legacy Christian.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. At this time, I would just like to, before we close, just also comment, Alan Limy, Limy?
Limy.
Limy from, C.U. Chamber of Commerce. They had a retirement celebration for him. So thank you for all the years of service he's had.
It was very well attended. Unfortunately, Alan was sick tonight. So everybody was there to congratulate him, but he is, he is currently ill, so.
And just like to dite what you said. And also thank Councilman Scrivens for your comment of Central State's willingness to scholarship students. You know, we want our young people to not only just grow up and graduate, but also stay here. So that's a very good policy decision on Central State to tuition assistance for our neighborhood-- for our neighborhood kids. We have a lot of positive things happening in our community with a lot of additions coming to downtown, and as we can see, more and more applications for businesses to move in our area. And I know we're all cringing when we go to the pumps right now, it's kind of very unprecedented times for us as a community, but I would ask all of my friends, neighbors, everyone that's watching, we just need to pray for peaceful resolve in the Ukrainian situation, it's a worldwide issue, and so just remember those people that are suffering right now. So at this time, we are going to ask for a motion to move into executive session for the purchase or sale of property per Xenia Codified Ordinance 20404 and ORC 121-22. Do I have that motion?
Subdued.
Moved by the mayor, do we have a second?
No second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. We will come back and formally adjourn, but we do not expect to take a vote, is that correct? Thank you very much. Do we have a roll call? Do we have a roll call? Okay, roll call. Thank you. Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.